Thank you, Shane. Good morning, everybody. Chair Conlon is to be accused as her law firm is bond counsel for the town of Milton, so I'll be as vice chair, uh, chairing for the select board. And um, our meeting is conducted pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty one includes an extension of the remote meeting provisions. Uh, as part of that, uh, we will introduce ourselves and all votes, any votes will be done by roll. Again, I'm Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis Secretary. Thank you, Arthur.
Melinda Collins, member.
Thank you, Melinda.
Richard Wells, member.
Thank you, Rachel. And Sean, would you like to, uh, open for the school building committee, please?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, my name is Sean O'Rourke, uh, Chair of the School Building Committee here in Milton. Um, we'll be conducting our meeting, our joint meeting with you under the same rules. Um, with us, uh, we can go through a roll call vote of, um, members, uh, and start with you, Mike.
Mike Zulis.
Uh, Ada.
Ada Rose Marin.
Uh, Betty.
Any White.
And Tim.
Sorry, Sean.
No problem.
On the mute.
Yep.
Perfect.
We can hear it, thank you.
Yep, Tim Lombard.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, the select board has, um, two items of, uh, business on the agenda. Our first item is discussion approval of the, uh, dates for the annual town meeting. And, um, I will move that, uh, the select board approved the dates of Monday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty two, Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty two, Monday, May twenty three, twenty twenty two, Tuesday, May twenty four, twenty twenty two, and Wednesday, May twenty five, twenty twenty two. Is there a second place?
Second, second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Any comments or discussion? Again, this is confirming vote. Mr. Zulus will take the role.
Um, you want me to, yes.
Oh, well, you need a second. Oh, we have a second for Mr. Wells, so this is the role. So, yes, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Another cappuccino, right, Mike?
Exactly.
This Collins. Thank you, Miss Collins, Mr. Wells.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And now we turn to the second item of business. This is a discussion and potential vote regarding revisions to home will petition to exchange conservation land at Gallo Road in Blue Hills Parkway for other town owned land and change of use of town owned land at Gallo Road and Blue Hills Parkway, including what not limited to a discussion about converting approximately six point seven acres of land at Gallo Road of active recreation to conservation. Mr. O'Rourke, may we turn to you, please?
Uh, sure, may, uh, just share my screen.
While Mr. Rook is doing that, if, uh, if needed, Amy Dexter's on the call and could be elevated if needed.
Thank you, Superintendent Chen.
Uh, so just let me know if you can see my screen, Mr. Vice Chair.
There's a bell.
All right. So a- as the select boards are aware, uh, the school building committee has been working, uh, with town council to identify parcels uh, for, uh, proposed Article ninety seven land swap. Um, currently, we are looking at the parcel in yellow here and that is essentially extends over Gallo Road, uh, as we call it, the hockey stick portion. The southern portion on this side of Gallo Road, we by identified as the preferred site for the construction of a new middle school. Um, in working with, um, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, we feel it would be helpful, uh, to, uh, work with them further to identify additional parcels to kind of add into the equation. Um, so what we, we, we were, um, looking at essentially is that the north side of Dow Road, which was the parcel that's on, uh, the opposite side. It's currently a town owned land, uh, that is, uh, deeded for active recreation. And essentially what we're looking to do is convert that from active recreation, uh, to conservation. And by adding that into the equation of the land swap, uh, basically created a greater ratio of conservation land there. Um, prior to this meeting, we just met with the Parks Commissioners. They unanimously, uh, uh, supported, uh, this, this, this going forward. Um, so for us, we wanted to kind of bring it, uh, before you for, uh, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any comments or questions from the select board, please?
I would also add before that, I think Betty White is on the call as well. If she could be elevated, I believe, believe she was on the call as well. Sorry about that.
Thank you, James. Mr. Zulus.
Uh, thank you, Mr., uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I, I, and, and Kevin Freitag can, can advise us, but I think what, uh, what we would need to do if we want to take this action is, is, is both, is to vote to support, um, uh, changing the use of this land from active recreation to conservation land and then to reopen the warrant to revise the warrant article to include this land as part of the land swap. And, and to support and, and then further, if we wish, to support, uh, the article, which we supported previously, uh, last week, but we, if we would, if we change the article, seems to me we may need a vote to support that. Um, if that, if that's what the board wants to do. So I think, I think, and Kevin, you can, you can obviously weigh in or if the Vice Chair sees fit, but, um, do we, do we want, do we approve changing the use of this land from active recreation to conservation? Do we reopen the warrant? And do we vote, do we vote to revise the warrant article? And do we vote to support the warrant article as, as revised?
Morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, how are you? Uh, I can respond to Mrs. Zulus's question. The answer to that question is yes.
That was easy.
Mr. Wells.
Morning, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It may not be as easy as my brother, Mr. Zulus was. You know, we throw words around like transparency. I think we need to be very upfront here. Mr. O'Rourke came and made a very strong argument for us last week, to which we voted, uh, four zero to support. And suddenly we're here four days later, there's an emergency park commissioners meeting and then a meeting of ours who want to change our vote or, or a request to change our vote. Personally, and I have many friends on this call, don't like being bullied and that's, I kind of feel like that's happening right here. You know, Sean, you were very forthright and open in everything you presented to us the other night. Then suddenly in the next twenty four hours that take place, um, I'm sure I'm not just about myself, but other members got many calls asking about suddenly we needed to change. And I think if we use words like transparency, as I said, I think we need to be very obvious that there is a small entity out there trying to pressure not just us, but you and the park commissioners to change our vote or they won't vote that. And for me personally, anyone who's known me, including my friends who are on here, I don't like being pushed and, uh, that's part of it truly bothers me. And as you know, Sean, you and I talked about this at length on Saturday. I think some one of us here, whether it's you, Arthur, or, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, someone needs to articulate why we're here today. Cause we, we, we go from Thursday to today, what happened? And I think we need to put this on the table before we.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. O'Rourke.
Um, thank you. Um, I, I echo that, Member Wells, um, you know, for, for us as a school building committee. Um, we've been working on this, as I mentioned at our, our last meeting that, or your last meeting that I presented at, um, since last August. Um, you know, the, 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 the tone or, or the, or the temperature, I believe, of the Conservation Com- Commission. Um, you know, we've been giving presentations to them and we're kind of hoping, uh, for a vote prior to this, uh, so that we can, you know, have this going forward with their buy in. Um, my concern of, you know, uh, the change is basically, you know, reaction to make sure that we can, for lack of a better word, overwhelm the Conservation Commission with the, with the positive vote. Um, partly what we're offering, the reason this one popped into my head is, as far as adding it to the equation, the majority of the land that we're talking about that's listed for active recreation has a number of wetlands already on them. And essentially would already fall under, um, the, the control or, or the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. They just, they don't own it. So essentially what we're looking to do is take land that has jurisdiction already by Conservation Commission and convert it to what they would own. The, the, the rapidness and what, how, why we're trying to react to this uh, is mainly due to the, how critical the nature of the entire issue is of new school. Um, so, you know, for us, we're on this, uh, there's certain things in construction when you, when you talk about them as far as critical path. And those are identified issues that come up during a construction process that are, you know, affect a lot of things going forward. This is one of them, so, um, well, I know members of this and other committees feel pressured. Um, I feel the same. I've been feeling it, you know, for about three to four months, so, um, that's, that's what I can, that's kind of the, the background I can provide.
Um, the comments about questions from either the select board members.
Can I respond, can I respond to, uh?
Mr. Wells certainly, please.
I get, I get it and I, I mean, I am a client of vote no because I don't like, it's not fair to show, it's not a member to the school building committee. It's just not fair. And I've had this feeling since we went on the sidewalk three weeks ago, that there was going to be some type of attempt to put not just this board, but especially the schools and some type of headlock, give, uh, and, and as I said just a moment ago, I'm not one of, and, and all my colleagues, especially Mr. Zulus knows, I'm not one who responds to things like this. And I get the need and it's going back to Sean, you made a very strong, I even asked you a couple of questions about this specific thing that you're here before us on today, on Thursday, and your response to me was you weren't going to have to go in that direction here to we are today. In that very same, in that end, the only reason, and it's not, I get to understand you're overwhelming, but you're making a defensive move to react to someone who's trying to be offensive against you. And that really, really, really bothers me and it's my friend Betty White knows. I've been a strong advocate of Milton Public Schools, not just professionally, but especially in my personal life over the past twenty years, so. Um, that's just where I'm at on this. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Collins, you were next, followed by Mr. Zulus.
Um, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, yeah, I'm, I, I'm certainly not opposed to the swap of this parcel. Um, if the, um, I, I'm, I am interested in knowing what the park commissioners, like what the tenor of the discussion was, sounds as if they were, um, for it. Um, it, uh, the parcel does have a lot of wetlands, so it's not clear that it, it would be a good candidate for active recreation. Um, I, uh, I guess my concern, similar to Richard's, but not quite the same, is, um, I, I feel like the concern I've been hearing is, you know, will, will we really be okay as far as that Article ninety seven? So I, I, um, that, that's the thing that I've, I've heard, um, from people and as long as that's copacetic, it sounds as if Kevin Freitag has been in regular communication, so things, um, look good there. I, I, I think from the people I've heard from that, that's been, that's been the real, um, concern. Uh, but I, but I don't, I don't have a, a, a problem, I think, uh, you know, given some of the history of the parcels over there. It could be good, uh, um, just sort of, I don't want to say it's a gesture, but I, I think it could be, um, it's appropriate. And, um, I, I guess my question is, um, just that conversation from the, uh, the commissioners and, um, and are they, will, will the, will the parks at all or will our, our local teams at all benefit from, you know, the development of the school there? I don't know. I, I, so that, that's, that's a, that's a question and that, that could, that could dovetail nicely. The answer is yes in some way.
Yeah, it, it, I can respond to that, uh, Member Collins, lower my hands. Yeah. So during the meeting with the Parks Commissioners, it wasn't blatant, you know, it wasn't a five minute meeting where they blatantly just said, yep, take it, you're fine. Um, they, they did have some concerns they raised, you know, what was their, what would they be giving up essentially? Uh, what they could construct there, what we were trying to educate them for, at least have the vision of, you know, look at this as, they weren't looking as the school was going to be built there. So along with that school, some of the things they brought up that they would like to look on the site that they had control over was parking, potential fields, additional things like that. We had to like bring them around and be like, hey, if we do this project, you're going to get all that stuff on the other side of the road and we're paying for it. You're not, you don't have to do anything on that. Um, so I think that helped alleviate some of it. There were three things that they did ask for is they did ask for essentially priority, uh, for, uh, use of the fields and the gymnasium. Uh, essentially does, you know, the schools would come first and then they want to be second in line. Uh, so we had Superintendent Chen on to speak to that. The second one was kind of an offer by me is as we go through this process, for lack of a better word, a seat at the table. Um, I can't appoint them because it's, it's the moderator that does, but I will ask the moderator if they can. We are looking at essentially augmenting the staff, whether the members in the school building committee. We have to do it if we get into MSBA later on, it's a requirement by them. Um, so that was one of the other things that we did offer. And then lastly, you know, uh, Park Commissioner, uh, Ted Carroll basically asked, you know, for the site that they would be giving up, what could be built there? Essentially, could you build a soccer field there potentially? Just, just understand, cause they, they, and again, I apologize, all this is so rushed, but just so they could see what truly they did, were giving up, quote unquote. Um, from looking at the site initially, the, we, so we took, I took the, um, two thousand and one civil drawings that were done for the construction of Gallo Road when they extended it down. That drawing has wetland boundaries that are, were, uh, uh, surveyed, stamped by professional engineer, professional surveyor. When you look at that and I have a copy of it, if you want to review it now, um, when you do the offset boundaries or the, the, the hundred foot distance that you can't build within, it takes that whole parcel and starts shrinking it down even further. So, you know, the, the ability, the ability to really build something on there, we don't think it would have happened. But that is, that was essentially their third ask that they're asking us to do and we'll have to go through that later on.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Mr. Cannon called, uh, a second ago and, uh, Richard, I've, um, suggested he join the meeting if there are any questions for him. And Lynn, could you, uh, check to see that, uh, he gets a board, please? Um, he was going to go to the public site, but you might want to send him the link at his email address. Um, I would like to go back to Melinda's to finish up.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair. So I just was wondering, um, if, if it would be possible to, I know that the CONCONs meeting is tonight, but either get, get that to Steve Ivis or if he's, if Tuesday's a day, he comes to Milton sometimes. Sometime, just, you know, have, get, send him that, see if he can look at it because that may, if, 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 uh, well, Mr. Doyle is really the person to, to talk about whether he thinks that would be helpful to them. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to ask, um, Mr. Freitag, if he had any comment relative to the question that you had asked earlier, Ms. Collins, about, um, whether or not everything would be included in your first comment. Did you have a question for Mr. Freitag at that point?
Um, I, I thank you. I, I think, um, just a reassurance that, um, things are, are, are going uh, in the direction they need to for us to, uh, to be able to do that Article ninety seven, um, process successfully.
Mr. Freitag.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, so the answer to that is, as recently as last week, I was in touch with Rob O'Connor at the office, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and let him know that this, um, that these meetings were, uh, contemplated and that there may be additional land proposed as part of the swap. They're aware of that. Ultimately, the input that I got back from, from Mr. O'Connor was once your, your boards have acted and determined what land will be part of this proposed transaction, to email his office and that their office will then review it and send us back a confirmatory email saying that they, they will approve or that they anticipate approving the transfer once it makes its way to the legislature and essentially support the transaction.
Mr. Zulus, thank you, Mr. Freitag.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And, 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 and further to that, my, you know, uh, and Kevin, you can correct me, but my understanding is that we don't expect this transaction to have much of an impact on the EOEAs, uh, review of this because it's already Article ninety seven land. Um, it's not going to change the designation from Article ninety seven land. Right now it's Article ninety seven land for active recreation. Then it will become Article ninety seven land for, uh, conservation. So it really, we don't expect it will change the analysis for the purposes of the EOE, EOEEA. But our understanding is that, um, the, the prior configuration without this additional land would be sufficient for the purposes of the EOEEA. Um, this is, to Richard's point, really a reaction to, uh, what we, uh, concerns expressed by the Conservation Commission and, and, and an effort to, um, to try to meet the needs of the, of the Conservation Commission. And, and I'll, I'll just repeat very quickly what, 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 you know, the overall thought, um, and something I said to the Parks Commissioners just this morning, which is, you know, we'd all like the land to stay the way it is. Um, we'd all like to take our time, uh, and, uh, and, and, and there, this hasn't really been rushed for the purposes of, uh, of, you know, this effort has began last August, but it is rushed because we're trying to respond to the concerns of the Conservation Commission raised in the last couple of weeks. Um, but, um, although, uh, we'd like all the land to stay the way it is and, and we'd like it not to move forward, we need a school and we need to be able to educate our kids. And, and unfortunately, we need to move on this because right now we're probably going to have kids in trailers for a period of time. And if we don't move on this, it's just going to extend for a longer period of time, uh, the time that we have kids in trailers. And so, um, uh, for our purposes, you know, the school building com- committee has worked for two and a half years and has identified this area, this site is not only the best site, but the only site. And so for us to continue our work and to move forward, um, we appreciate the fact that this board voted the way it did last week. We appreciate the fact that the Parks Commissioners voted the way they did this morning. We hope that the Conservation Commission will vote, um, uh, tonight so we can continue our work, so we can educate our kids and build a school. And that's really, and, and I appreciate the fact that it's, it's, um, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, you know, Richard, I appreciate the fact that, that, that things have changed a little bit, but it's really a response to concerns that have been raised in an effort to try to, to try to get a compromise here so we can move forward on this, which, which I think is, for us is the end game.
Well, let's go to Ms. Rose Marin, whose hand has been up, but before we do, I want to acknowledge the fact that Conservation Commission Chair John Cannon is here. And, uh, Richard, Mr. Wells had a, a possible question relative to your participation, John, and information that you might be able to provide. So after Ms. Rose Marin, I'd like to go to Mr. Wells. Ms. Rose Marin, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Um, well, thank you all for, for meeting with us this morning and I appreciate Mr. Wells's, um, concern about, about needing to meet again and, and changing this and, and, um, its request. And we're basically trying the best we can to do a balancing act and the town has to consider all of the factors, um, in this balancing act. And it's the needs of our children, uh, for an education in schools that aren't overcrowded like they are right now and the need to preserve as much open space as we possibly can, uh, for the town and for all of our well being. Um, and in our conversation with the Parks Commission, and one of the things that, that really became clear to me in, in that conversation was the, what the parks are doing for our children, you know, it's the same children that we're educating during the day in the schools. Um, after school, they're participating in parks programs and, um, and outdoor activities that, that the parks may provide. And so the opportunity to try to find that balance by, um, the, on the parcel that we're, will be developing, there will be some green space. We still, it's still just a conceptual, um, plan at this point, but we know that there will be some additional um, outdoor play area. We know that there will be a preschool playground for the neighborhood and we know that there will be a school gym. Um, so that after school hours, um, children from the neighborhood from across town will be able to enjoy that and Parks Commission programs, um, can benefit from that. In addition, we'll have additional parking there for, um, participation in the other fields that are on the, the high school site. So I think that this, this plan really, um, does a lot towards accomplishing the balance that we're looking for and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Your Ms. Rose Marin, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair. John, how are you? Uh, welcome. So, so I, my one question in, in Mike's source, I, I hear you, I was with you on this the other night. I, I, I get this. But one of my concerns is that if we vote this today, cause I've heard three proposals for land since our vote on Thursday night, that this plus additional, at least one other. My concern is we vote this and the Chair of the CONCON goes tonight and they come back and say, there still isn't enough. This is, goes back to what I, what I talk about, I'm not, I'm not one who likes to be bullied or pushed. Um, that's, that's, and, and what I, John, Mr. Cannon, what I, what I said this morning when we started is, well, Mr. O'Rourke came and made a very detailed and articulate presentation before our board the other night. I actually asked about this possible land that we're discussing today and he provided to us that it wasn't going to be touched and now here we are, not four days later, not just us, but the board of Park Commissioners had to have like emergency meetings to add this piece of land and we use words like transparency in politics all the time, but my, my feeling was that we had to at least articulate why we're back here today just discussing something that was off the board a week ago and today here we are voting for it. So my concern is if we do vote to support this and it's, Mr. Rook made a great description of how the CONCON has concerns. I am with Michael that the state, the executive office supported pretty much what you presented and what we voted on the other night is being acceptable to them. If we vote this today to add this pass of land, are you truly comfortable that your commission will vote to support this article moving forward? Cause I'm like, I, I for one of this board don't want to be here after forty eight hours from now to add another piece of parcel and I really don't. I just don't think it's right. As, as important as the project as it is, just not how we should be doing business. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine and I can respond, but, uh, I've been on a, a Zoom conference in the federal court and I actually don't know what happened this morning with the Parks Department.
I don't want, Sean, you want to, you might want to, I don't want to speak for, you were the one who attended.
John, would you be able to address that? And then I'd like to come back to an additional piece of land. Um, Mr. Wells, thank you for making that mention.
Yeah. Good morning, Ms. Cannon. So this morning, we met with the Parks Commissioners that voted unanimously to support this. As as I was mentioning, I'm not sure if you made it on the Zoom call or not. They they essentially had three asks or concerns. The first was priority of use of the facilities, meaning the gymnasium as part of the school and the fields that would be part of it, that essentially after the schools, they would be second on priority list. The 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 second one was the essentially what I offered was a seat at the table as we're doing this design, so trying to augment the School Building Committee with a member of the Parks Commissioners. The third was from a member, Carol, that asked for the land that would be given up, or the land that we're talking about today that's active recreation, on that six-acre parcel, essentially what could be built there. So I had pulled the civil engineering drawings from two thousand and one when they constructed the Gao Road, and there were actually wetlands flagged on that that parcel there. So I went through and just kind of, you know, drew a line to see what they look like and then what that hundred-foot buffer would look like. And what it did was take that parcel and kind of squeeze it down to a much smaller buildable lot. And again, I joked at the Parks, the Parks Meeting is like, there was an electrical engineer trying to be a civil engineer. So, you know, there's further study that we need to do on that, but essentially what Member Carol asks is, on whatever is left over there, what could be built? So they would kind of understand in a simplistic way what they would be giving up. You know, part of their concern too is, you know, on that same note, they wanted to know what what could have been built there and stuff like that. What we had to educate them a little bit about was, you know, the vision of the school, that some of the things that they were talking about, you know, the construction that's going to be going on now, Lower Gao Road and the fields associated with that, they they mentioned they might need parking as part of that on that on this parcel that we're talking about. And what I had to educate them on is, if we do the school, you're going to have plenty of parking on the other side of the road. You're going to have fields on the other side of the road where we build the school, you know, and and the gymnasium, and all of that will be built for them under our budget, not a not a Parks Commissioner's budget. So essentially, that alleviated, those three things kind of alleviated a lot of their concerns. And as I said, they voted unanimously to support.
All right, that's that's great news. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, if I can go back to a question by Mr. Wells, and that is, I I obviously can't speak for the commission, but I can give you a sense of what we're looking at tonight. And that is, I believe, this land swap, that is the enhancement of a land swap. And I and again, Arthur, I don't know whether or not we're talking about both parcels now, the Park Department as well as the Select Board across the street, the the lot. Are we talking about both of those or just the Park Department land?
The Park Department land is what's being discussed at the present time.
Okay, well, that will certainly be an enhancement. And I I think that the the sense that I get, and again, this is not a a vote, I can't speak for the individual commissioners, but the sense is that we were looking at a net gain for the Conservation Commission and the conservation values that we seek to protect. And the question had come up in previous discussions at public meetings as to whether or not this was a fair swap or whether or not there's an enhancement to the Conservation Commission values. So what we are looking at is giving up six-point-eight acres and getting in return eight-point-eight acres. I'm approximating. The eight-point-eight would be the combination of Herrick Drive and Randolph Avenue. That was pretty close, and one of the questions came up, what's the value of the land? And now it gets really vague because we don't exactly know how to value the land. It may have a fair market value if it's developable, buildable, and it might change if it's not buildable. But as the fair market value decreases for land that is not buildable, the ecological value increases. So it's a it's kind of a a soft area. There's a lot of ambiguity. There are some nuances involved in how to value the switch, you know, what are we getting in exchange for, what are we giving up? And then you add to that the intent of the grant or the land system is going back, and that's a fact that they were clearly looking at the ecological value. So the suggestion from the Conservation Commission generally was, if you enhance the amount of land we get back, then that would eliminate that ambiguity of, is this a, is it a fair swap? And by adding this parcel from the Park Department, and I I dare to suggest that it would be enhanced even more if we could get the parcel across the street, that it would be overwhelmingly a net benefit to the Conservation Commission and the values that we protect. So what we're trying to do is eliminate the issue as to valuation of land and what are we, are we comparing apples and oranges, what's buildable, what's not buildable? We eliminate that controversy, so to speak, or that issue by overwhelmingly changing the acreage. So if we were to add the Park Department land to the Herrick Drive and to the Randolph Avenue site, and if we were to add the point-nine acres across the street that also were buts Conservation Commission land, now that would come out to sixteen-point-something, it's somewhere between sixteen-point-three and sixteen-point-eight. In my mind, that completely eliminates the issue of net gain. And what's driving us and driving our commission and the thought process is, do we get a net gain for the values that we are duty-bound to protect? I think the answer is an overwhelming yes. Again, I I speak for myself and a sense of the committee, but of course, this is a question of individual votes. So I I think that in answer to your question, I believe we will not come back, Mr. Wells. I think I think this will do it. I I think that the difference between what we're giving up and what we're getting back is is very clear and very clear in a positive sense.
Well, thank you for that. But I think that other than Mr. other than Mr. Doyle, myself, I don't think any of the other members of this call are aware of the other point-nine acres on the table. I made reference to a second piece of land. I don't know who else knew about it. I can see Michael shaking his head, no, he didn't know. That was my concern. My concern was, you know, if we vote this, then what's next? So the you were, you opened the door for the point-nine. That is not a part of our discussion at all today.
I thought it had been. I'm sorry. Put it up, let's put it on the table. I think it should be on the table.
In this conversation, brings to mind another piece of property relative to the land near Herrick Drive. When a question had arisen, I had asked Town Treasurer for some information, and he identified or shared the fact that there was another lot of town-owned land that the town had taken for tax purposes adjacent to the Herrick Drive property. It is a parcel of one-point-three acres on School Street, right at the intersection of School Street and Herrick Drive. So that parcel could also be included in the totality of the discussion in any land swap, as I understand it. And Lynn has the map of that and would be able to put it up if anybody would like to see where that is. I see it.
Maybe outside the scope of our agenda there. I see Town Council has this hand up.
Yes, he does. Thank you. Mr. Fitek?
Mr. Vice Chair, two points on that. First, I think Mr. Mr. Wells makes a good point that it's it's not something that's been identified in the agenda for today. But I I also would just mention that I believe that that land is also protected by conservation restriction. We looked at that parcel along the road here, and I think that there were, there are five parcels up there on Herrick Drive. They're they're almost all contiguous. The piece that you're talking about is sort of around the corner on the School Street. I think that that's already protected and it wasn't subject. It was something that we talked about along the along the way, and I don't think that it's even a possibility here because it's already protected.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Fitek. Very helpful. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I I think that, Kevin, you can correct me. I think the point-nine that Mr. Cannon refers to, that may be, that may be outside the scope of our agenda today. But given this, for the purposes of discussion for our board, I'm prepared to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the request of the School Building Committee to include the point, how many acres is Guile? Is you referring to, Sean, on the left side of Gao?
It's right around six acres.
To to include the six additional acres to the north side of Gao Road as you enter the Milton High School campus to this article, to be attached to this article. Actually, actually, I think, let me think of. I'm going to rephrase that. I'm going to make a motion to amend our vote of last week to include six acres, to now include the six acres of land to the north side of Gao Road to be, and we can, if you, you can, you can change, add whatever you want to this, but that's my motion to include this.
Is there a second to Mr. Wells' motion?
I'll second, I'll second, pardon me, I'll second the motion.
You can add whatever you want there, Mike. I may not have put everything in there.
No, I, you know, I think you got it in general, and Kevin's raising his hand. But I think what I think what we may want to do is, you know, as you say, approve that that transfer from active recreation to conservation. And then, so we've approved that, and then we reopen the warrant, move to reopen the warrant, and then we move to revise the article to include that land. And then we, and then we, if we want to, as we did last week, we move to support that article as result revised. I may be wrong on that, but that's what, that's kind of what's in my head. Maybe Kevin has an idea, but.
Mr. Fitek, you're recognized then, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I think Mr. Zulus has it right. That's that's exactly the sequence. I would also just add the following, that there there has been some discussion about this parcel, I think the the point-nine that's up further up on Blue Hills Parkway. I I would suggest not not addressing that at all right now. That's something that it's not on the agenda. If that's something that comes back to the board, do so at a subsequent meeting, but just stick with what you've got right now.
Ms. Collins?
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Fitek.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, so does that mean that we have to add that language to the motion about converting the use of land from active recreation to conservation?
Mr. Fitek?
Yes, and just to be clear, I I I think what we're doing here is we're taking some some votes, the Select Board's taking a vote here that is maybe not strictly speaking necessary, but is a supportive vote, which is, I think, how Mr. Zulus framed it initially. Right now, the parcel that we're talking about for active recreation pursuant to the deed that was conveyed to the town under is in active recreation and is is controlled by the Parks Department. So from the Executive Office of the Energy and Environmental Affairs perspective, they want to see Parks, the Parks Department, vote to transfer that land to something else. Parks has already done that. I think what the Select Board is doing here is voting to support that. It's not strictly speaking under their control. So they're they're not the, you know, sort of the confirmatory or necessary vote, but they are, there is a vote of the Select Board to support that transfer. And then the necessary votes of the Select Board do come into play, which are reopen the warrant, amend the article, close the warrant, and then proceed from there.
All right, so, oh, I'm sorry. I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna amend my motion, so I'm going to do several here. I think my first motion, I'm going to make a motion to reopen the warrant. I'll get a second on that.
I think, oh, well, Mr. Fitek.
Mr. Fitek, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Collins.
I'm I'm making up for my one-word answer at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm just going to continue. I'm sorry. I think that the sequence here is is what Mr. Zulus recommended initially. So I think the first vote is vote of the Select Board to support the transfer of, or or or, yeah, the transfer of the land from active recreation to conservation. That's vote one. And then the second vote would be to include that particular, to open the warrant. That's your second vote. And then your third vote is to amend the article that's in the warrant now to include the land that is for active recreation purposes only at Guile Road, and then close the warrant. So you've got four votes.
I think that brings us back to my first.
So you have to withdraw your motion?
I'm going to leave my first one. My first motion was, what Kevin just said, is to close the land. So I think we're all right on that one.
I think Ms. Collins was asking if you would draw the second motion at this time.
I was amended, so yeah, so I'm I'm going to withdraw the second and stick to my first. And I think Michael seconded that.
And Mr. Fitek, did you wish for the comment at this time? No? So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any further comment or discussion? Bearing none, I will conduct the roll on behalf of the Select Board. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the warrant.
Second.
Motion has been made to reopen the warrant and seconded. Is there any discussion? Bearing none, I will conduct the roll. Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to include, I'm not sure, Lynn, what's the article number? This, what article is this for town meeting that we voted on the other night?
I have it as one, but I'm not sure of the exact number. I have to look at the index.
I think it's thirty-four.
So I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Vice Chair, to amend.
The article, right?
Article thirty-four. To include the additional six acres of land on the nor, on the north side of Gao Road to be included in this, is it a land swap? Is it a land swap, Michael? Yeah, land swap or land acquisition for the purposes of the School Building Committee article, a project.
Second.
Okay, that is subject to confirmation of the article number, but we know which article it is. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Bearing none, I will conduct the roll. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
And finally, another motion, motion number four. Mr. Wells?
I'll make a motion to close the article, close the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second please? Ms. Collins seconded. Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Mr. Wells, you have your hand up, please.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. I want to go back to Mr. Cannon's concerns because I I I had a feel, I did not, as he knows now, that the that point-nine acres was not brought up by me today. And I I I knew it wasn't on our agenda, so I knew that was going to be an issue. I don't know if we can come back to this, John. I don't know if we can go back to that. I'm hoping that your skill and ability to direct your committee will, that this will be enough to get you there tonight.
I I believe that it will, and I thank you for the vote, as I thank the Parks Commissioner as well.
Mr. Zulus, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have one one additional motion, and and that is, last week, we voted to support the article. And so so I I'd like to make a make a motion, now that we have amended the article, to put it on the warrant, I'd like to make a motion to support the amended article.
Second.
So it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Bearing none, the roll. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. I just wanted to do a vote of my committee also to support this. So we'll wait for a motion from someone of my committee in a second.
I'll I'll move to recommend to the Select Board, although perhaps we should have done this before, but I'll I'll move to recommend to the Select Board that we include in the the proposed land swap article the land on the approximately approximately six acres on the north side of Gao Road.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second. Second.
All right. So the roll call vote. Ada?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
You're welcome, Mr. O'Rourke. And I'd like to thank everybody for time and attention to this extremely important. Matter in the town of Milton. Being without any further business, I'd entertain a motion at this time on behalf of the select. What maybe, Sean, you want to entertain a motion first to adjourn from this. School building committee and then we will adjourn the meeting as a whole.
That works. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I want you to adjourn.
All right. All right. So with the roll call vote, Ada?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair will entertain a motion on behalf of the select board to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Collins and Mr. Wells. No further discussion. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone.
We love you, but we don't want to see you back.
I suppose it's the wall.